Everybody.
A long time ago.
Uh, it is now six thirty, so I'd like to call the, uh, the meeting with the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, our meeting of Tuesday, November fourteenth to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Whitworth?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Phelps?
Yep.
McNally?
Here. If we can stand and recite the Fledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You done with these? Tammy, can you advise us as to whether or not this meeting was properly posted, and if so, how?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the village website.
All right, okay. Sounds like we got official status. Okay, we're gonna open this up for public comment, and the first person that I'd like to come up is Erica Lean. And Erica, if you can sit here at the table, give us your, your name and what you have done here and for the community in the last two, three weeks.
Oh, okay, I'm Erica Lean. I work at Pleasant Time, and we did the costume parade, and then... We helped organize the downtown trick-or-treating.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Very cool. How did that event go?
It went really well. We had a really big turnout. This was the first year, the previous years, I've only helped organize it two years. The other years, I think Dusty and Tony Clemens did it before, but, um, yeah, the other years, they did it on Saturday, and then the businesses downtown, they do their Thursday night thing, so they suggested we do it on Thursday, so we moved to Thursday night, and it was the Thursday that there was no school, so, well, there's never, but the no-school days for the fall October break, so there were tons of kids, and we met, instead of meeting by the bank and going around Veterans Park, we just started at West Side Park and then went down the sidewalk, so then they didn't have to shut down the road by Veterans Park. Because last, the first year we did it on Saturday, and they did that, it was like, it took like four minutes, and we had to get someone from the village to block off the road, and I kinda felt bad that the guy had to come out on Saturday and block off the road, and we blocked the road off, and it was like less than five minutes, so it's like, we could just go on the sidewalk, and then we don't have to, you know, bother anybody on a Thursday night. So, we did that, and it went really well, because then the kids met at the park, at West Side Park, and they could play for a while, and we started, the rain stopped, so everybody was playing at the park, and when it was five o'clock, we just walked down. Um, we had volunteers from the First Bank, is that what it's called now? The one down there, not the...
Bank First.
Yes. Uh, they volunteered, and they helped with crossing people, and then we just walked down to the corner by Market and before the Plow, and then people dispersed, and they went trick-or-treating. So, yeah, lots of kids, everybody had a good time, it looked like, yeah.
Were there any incidents, any cold calls, anything wrong?
Not to my knowledge. I think everybody was good. Parents were with their kids, so everybody was crossing good, and, yeah.
This came up, joint law enforcement. And then lastly, how many people do you estimate showed up, little trick-or-treaters?
I'm terrible at that, but, um, I would say, I talked to some of the businesses, and they kind of knew how much they had, and it was about two hundred, a little over two hundred trick-or-treaters. So, I don't know, you know, trick-or-treaters had their parents with them, so that adds some numbers, but kids-wise, I usually only count the kids, so it was a little over two hundred.
And it was nice, because some of those kids came to the library, because the library is open as well, and, um, the, the library was also open, I think, on Halloween night, but we had more people on the Thursday night at the library than, than the Halloween, so that was really nice.
Yeah.
Good to get people into the library, too.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Did a wonderful job, and thank you very much.
No problem.
On behalf of Cambridge for coordinating and hosting this little hobgoblin and running around town and getting their treats, so that's great.
Well, as a Pleasant Time, I always look to have fine ways to make things fun for the kids, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we are still in the public comment. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Okay, if you can come up, introduce yourself, and make sure that Gary is recording us.
I'll try to be as brief as possible, but I would appreciate a three-minute timeframe instead of two, if possible.
Is there anybody else that's gonna wanna speak? Okay, three minutes is fine. Can you time this, Tammy? Make sure.
Thank you. Section four point one point four of the IGA states, I quote, "Prior to the adoption of succeeding year, the succeeding year's annual operating budget, the commission shall review the current year's annual budget and reconcile and approve changes in revenue and expenditures from the approved annual budget. How can you, as a village board, approve the fire EMS commission budget when there has been absolutely no year-to-date versus budget numbers presented that result in no reconciliation of the current budget? Eleven months ago, financial data that has been asked for since October twenty-two has still not been provided. Seven months ago, during your April twenty-fifth board meeting, it was stated that Cambridge EMS expanding to other areas cannot and will not be funded through the existing budget. It was noted that the proposed expansion would not, would have to come back to municipalities for a vote to approve. Last month, the Town of Lake Mills contract was negotiated without a cost analysis provided, has been signed by someone other than a commission member, and without approval from the commission as a whole. Tonight, at the Lake Mills Board meeting, they are having discussion and/or decision regarding rental of the former Lake Mills EMS facility for the current EMS service provider. Some members of the commission were unaware of this discussion and possible decision taking place. I've seen no commission agendas or amendments that have reflected reviewing any cost analysis for the Town of Lake Mills, nor any motion to send to the municipalities for approval. The commission treasurer still has not been provided access to bank accounts, so there is no report that provides what money may be available for expenditures in emergency situations or to fulfill monthly obligations. Do we know if any money has been spun out of the reserve funds without municipalities' approvals per the IGA? Do we know what the current balances are in the reserve funds versus the balances that were last reported in those accounts in May of twenty-two? Since there is clear disregard for any type of reporting of our taxpayer dollars, I am confident there is no accounting in place for the Town of Lake Mills' expanded area to ensure we are not paying toward that expansion. How are we assured, based on the current financial state of affairs of the commission, that we are not paying for this? Who are all of the individuals that have checks in their possession or access to check, signature stamps, or bank records, and why have they not been forwarded or not been allowed to be accessed by the treasurer of the commission? Bills and invoices continue to be paid late, accruing late fees and penalties. You have two CPAs on this board. Based on information presented, is the commission following section four point six of the IGA? Is the commission maintaining a system of accounting in conformity with generally acceptable accounting principles appropriate for its operations? Ask yourself, based on the information just shared, would this be acceptable financial practices for the Village of Cambridge that you represent? If not, why is it okay for the fire EMS commission? By approving the budget, you are enabling them to continue unacceptable behavior regarding our taxpayer dollars. The budget should be denied, and a complete audit is needed by an independent CPA now. Thank you.
Time's up. Good job. She made the three minutes.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? If I enclose the public comment? Okay, it's closed. All right. Uh, let's move on. Item five, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Okay, call the matter to vote. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. That's our village board minutes of October twenty-fourth, and the audit and finance committee meetings. All right, reports. I've got four items here I'd like to share. Met with the Cambridge Business Development. They had a, a meeting, and at that time, we talked about, or they talked about the Christmas Cookie Walk. It's sold out, so if anybody's interested, it's too late. There was also the Strictly Discs. There's a new owner of the business that's on the corner, and they're looking at opening in June of two thousand and twenty-four. So, as to what they're gonna do, they're still kind of in the process of trying to figure everything out that they have. They wanna be able to maybe have some small concerts for people inside the building, and they're looking at their inventory. One other item here, and I will be bringing this up with you, Todd. It had to deal with the lights on the sidewalks, and it's dark in areas, so I'll, I'll bring that back around when you come up. Next item up that I attended was the FFA breakfast, and that was this past Sunday. Nice turnout at the school. I think they must've had, I don't know, three hundred people, again, I'm just estimating it by the numbers that I could see around me, and had a strong turnout. And they're, they're always, we appreciate what they're doing. Next item up is December first is our Cambridge Christmas, and that's the big day here in the community, and we'll have the little, listen, I saw the votive candles, are the candles in the bag? Are those votive candles or motive candles or something? They're the little plastic candles, and they're in a bag, it's a luminary thing?
Luminaries.
Yeah.
That's what they call them.
Okay, all right. And they're, they'll be up and down the sidewalk, there'll be the Cookie Walk, and there'll be the lighting of the tree, Santa Claus is coming in, and I think we already have decorations that are up at Veterans Park, and I don't think they are the villages, so they must be the Lions Club. Perhaps we'll hear about that. But they're, they're already underway with that.
So, there's the events on Friday night, and then there are events on Saturday as well. Elf on a Shelf will be here at the Amundson Center, and then the library has, is going to be sponsoring some, I think, an ornament to deck, an ornament, making an ornament for, if people wanna stop over at the library as well.
Breakfast with Santa on Sunday.
Oh, Sunday, Breakfast with Santa, thank you.
In the Fire Department, you will be escorting, it's just Santa this year, there's no Mrs. Claus.
I don't know, I think so.
Yeah. That's what I was told, so. And then the other item that I wanna share with, with you, I received a letter of resignation from Mr. Tim Phelps, and this is the last meeting, Tim?
Yes, sir.
We will, you're, you're leaving the area.
I am, I'm leaving, I'm going all the way down to the state of Mississippi. For a new job.
All right. Well, we will miss you, and we'll, we'll send you photos of...
Snow.
Snow.
(laughing).
Right, right. Okay, so, but thank you for your service here.
Absolutely.
Best of luck to you and your family.
Thanks, and I wish everybody great holidays.
Okay, all right. Okay, so that's my report. Okay, moving on, Library Board. Paula?
Yep, we met last week. We talked about the forty-fifth anniversary and that, which is, this year's the forty-fifth, we're gonna culminate that with the, the January community meal, so we'll be, the library will sponsor in that. If any of the board here wants to volunteer and help to serve that community meal, just let us know. We're still working on getting a new copier, we're gonna participate with that event at Cambridge Christmas that we talked about, and I think that's really it for the highlights. Samantha, did I forget anything you wanted to mention?
I can mention some of the stuff that's coming up this month.
Okay, sure.
So, the library actually has some of our biggest events coming up in the next couple weeks here. On Thursday, the sixteenth, we have our Turkey Bingo, which is a family event. We play bingo for Thanksgiving food. So, you know, a can of green beans, or a box of stuffing, things like that, that's a, a large event.
Is that this Thursday, or?
This Thursday, yes, at six-thirty, I believe. That's on the sixteenth. And then we also have our, our Friday Flick is this week as well, which we're showing Barbie, that seems to be a, 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 a point of excitement for a lot of the library patrons. And then we'll have our gingerbread building program in the middle of December, which is our second biggest program throughout the year, so that's very exciting. Yeah.
Great. Well, good luck with all of these events.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Samantha's been doing a great job in the new director position, so, or in the director position for the library, so the board's been very happy with her.
All right, well, congratulations, Samantha. Keep up the good work. Okay, Plan Commission.
Oh, we met last night. We had the public hearing for the comprehensive plan, and then after that, we had the adoption of the comprehensive plan, at least a motion to recommend to the board to adopt the comprehensive plan. There was a discussion about the property with the water tower, at least I had mentioned last time. I'm gonna work with MSA and with legal counsel on what exactly to do and how to go best about that for us. And then we had the Quick Trip Site Plan, which is also in your agenda here. Plan Commission did approve the site plan as presented, with no major feedback from anyone that came, so it seemed to be a, a good deal. That was it.
Okay. Questions for Erica?
So, everything for the comprehensive plan is now done?
There are still a, um, we have thirty days where Dane County and Jefferson County have the opportunity to provide their input, and then we have to have another hearing to finally adopt it.
And is a copy of that comprehensive plan on our website? Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, any further questions? All right. Okay, moving on, Joint Law Enforcement.
I'll let Bill take it.
Thanks.
No problem.
We met earlier tonight. Officer...
Joe.
Joel. Gave us an update. Everything's pretty much as planned, other than the new officer has been selected. I'm not sure if the name is known, they didn't share it with us, and would he start some road training here in the next month, and then hope by end of March, early April, be back in full force for us, back to full staffing with our police force.
Yep.
And the highlights.
Okay, anything else that you remember from the meeting?
Uh, he just went over the last quarter numbers of what Deerfield and Cambridge did. I didn't see anything from Rockdale, but it was mentioned. It seemed to be on par with everything that's been going on in the last year, so nothing excessive.
All righty, we'll move on. We're looking for Todd Lord, our Director of Public Works. Sir, if you can have a seat, and introduce yourself.
Todd Lord, Director of Public Works for Cambridge. Yard cleanup, we have eight hundred and sixty cubic yards of leaf pickup that we've done, despite, despite the breakdowns on the machine. Lions Club, we, we set up the, we set up the light part for the park down there. We just turned the lights on, we didn't know if they wanted them on or not, but we just looked neat, so we just left them on. No LRIP this year. Will be in the round for the next year. Nine people didn't make it, and we were one of them. Nine out of nineteen. Waiting for the garland. It's, it's backordered for a few days or something like that, so I don't know when that's gonna be set up. We're trying to wrap up the mowing and, and stuff, and we're getting, starting to light up for, for the lights and plowing and stuff like that.
Is the equipment all, you think, been made?
Well, putting a new gas tank in the, in the Chevy truck, so. Let's see, we're, well, as, as duct tape and glue, is that what it was, Chris? Is that? Duct tape and glue it.
Bubble gum.
Bubble gum.
Yep. Anything else? You said something about the lights on the sidewalk?
Well, yeah, backing up, you mentioned the equipment. It was the equipment that was breaking down for the leaf collection?
Uh, the, the vacuum itself. It blew the bearings.
Wasn't that a new vacuum?
That vacuum only has a hundred and fifty hours on it. It's not the only one that's done that. Other vacuums are doing the same thing. It was a very, very pricey thing, because it's not under, it's not under warranty anymore. It's only under warranty for one year, he said.
So, how much?
So, it was about forty-six hundred dollars to put those bearings, to replace the bearings in it. Says what happens is, is the bearings, the bearings have a tendency to collect moisture when they're, you know, when they sweat, when they're working constantly, and then when you park it for the winter, it, it has a, it will freeze up, and it, it can crack a bearing and crack a piece of a bearing, and then it starts, started doing this little funny noise, so we brought somebody in, and he said, "That's a bearing." He said, "Do not run that thing and get it fixed." It took him a day and a half, two days to get it fixed. Part alone was like twenty-seven hundred dollars, the bearings, for that thing.
And how many cubic yards did you pick up of leaves?
Eight hundred and sixty so far.
All right, is that more than in the past, or?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping, I think average was nine, nine fifty or nine seventy. I think we're gonna, I think we should hit about a thousand this year or greater.
Okay. And then it takes, what, two years for that to break down to dirt that you can use as compost?
Yeah, two to three years. We actually have some really nice dirt down at Meister's right now.
Okay, all right. The lights, this had come up with the business district, and they were talking about, especially down where water hits Main Street.
Okay.
And it's dark in there, and I, they just brought it up to me that we need to have lights downward illumination, and I said, you know, I'm not sure...
Is there a light out?
I don't know.
I'll go down and look on my way through.
Okay. Because, you know, I can't imagine it, you're just allowed to put up lights, because that's right there is the highway, and they don't wanna have...
Well, there is a corner light down there.
Yeah.
It's, it's supposed to be right at that intersection, maybe that light's out.
Okay, if you can check that.
I can do that on the way out tonight.
Appreciate that, Todd. Okay, other questions? What, concerns for, for Todd? All right, so the guys are just gonna keep going, and as soon as you get your garland, you'll hopefully have that in, ready to go.
Yeah, we'll have to treat it first, and then we can put it out, because if you don't treat it, it'll turn brown before, about, probably halfway into Christmas here, so you wanna make sure it's treated.
I might regret this, but what do you do to treat it?
Uh, we have some special spray, you spray on there, and it, it, you let it sit for twenty-four hours, so it, it holds it together. Last year, last year it worked really well. That stuff was green, it didn't even, it didn't even, it was still green when we were taking it down.
Okay.
Which was pretty amazing.
And you think the lights and everything will come down like second week in January or something like that? The garland?
I believe so.
Yeah. And you're gonna, lastly, you're gonna still put the, the lights over here by West Side Park?
After, after the...
Yeah, Chris.
We're, we're hoping we actually get a winter so we can have ice out there.
We can actually have a skating rink this year?
Last, last year we filled it up, it froze over, and then it thawed, not even two weeks after it froze over, and it was beautiful. Then it, then it thawed out for, it got, what, forty, fifty degrees?
Yeah. Okay, Todd, thank you for coming by.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And then we're on to Village Office Updates. Tammy?
Actually, I have one question, I'm sorry. Public Works, do they need any winterized clothing for the year? I know you have an allowance to, to receive, like, coats or something like that. I, I would just take inventory of your folks and make sure that they have what they need. You have some new people?
Yeah.
Jackets and everything.
They actually, last year they upgraded. They seem to be, they seem to be really good with their coats, and me, my coat looks like a grease pit, so.
Yeah, I think we have a yearly stipend for that.
I'll, I'll check with them.
Thinking stuff.
Thanks for reminding me, I was gonna ask them about that.
Yep.
All righty, Tammy, updates?
Audit is complete. I've completed putting in all the final journal entries, and now we're waiting for the final final. Lot of time was taken doing the budget, limit worksheet, attended Dane County training for tax collection, did the quick claim deed for vineyards, the land that's complete, working on the sampling, or the sampler for the dancing goat, working with the attorney, DNR, Jefferson County, on Koshknon Creek issue. Jane is drafting a letter for that. Ongoing fire EMS commission issues, final work on the comprehensive plan, quick trip site plans, worked with Charles Faisel for his proposed project, working with Ellers on well number three financing and the clean drinking water loan application, simplified rate increase and the general rate increase, Vicky's been working really hard on that. WEDC reporting for Cambridge on Maine. Lisa was working on agendas packets, tying up loose ends prior to vacation. We're currently adding specials are being added to the tax rolls for Jefferson County and for Dane County, and we signed a contract for a new printer for upstairs. It is, it's, we've been paying a monthly amount, so this is just a little bit in excess of what we've been paying all along, so that we can get a different printer in there, so signing the contract for that. That's it.
Questions for Lisa, or Tammy? I've got one, but it's gonna go back to you, Jane. This Koshknon Creek and the notice of claim, where, what's the timetable on that, or?
Oh, this is, this is a notice of claim that we got from the DNR. They were concerned about some of the work that we had done. In the notice of claim, it didn't seem to acknowledge that we had done the work in conjunction with the Jefferson County Drainage District, which actually triggers all kinds of permitted exemptions, and so sometime this week, I'll respond back. I actually do a lot of work for drainage districts, and so I'll respond back to make sure that they're aware and that we are invoking Chapter Thirty Waterways and the, and the wetlands permitting exemption that, that should apply here, so, really, it, it just seems like it, it might be a matter of miscommunication. They didn't assert in the letter that, that we did anything that shouldn't withstand the exemption if we just apply the exemption.
Okay. And the trees that are down will just stay there, we're not doing anything, we're not planning on pulling those out, or?
At this point, that would definitely be our position, that we shouldn't have to, yeah.
Twenty feet, twenty feet off. That's the, that's the rule.
Should be pretty easy to see a trunk in a tree, okay. So, you'll have that in the next week, then?
Yep.
It'll be fun.
Yep.
Any other questions for Tammy or for Jane? Okay, we'll move on. Treasurers' Report and Bills. Let's go with Bills first.
Okay. First renter checks, twenty-five thousand, nine forty-three and thirty-four cents. Second round, seventeen thousand, one ninety-seven and forty-four cents, for a total of forty-three thousand, one forty and seventy-eight cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of forty-three thousand, one hundred forty dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
All right, discussion. Any questions here, trustees? I have one, and it's gonna go back to you, Tammy, or maybe to Todd. I think this is that gas tank. I saw that that was one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars for a two thousand and nine Chevy. Is the truck even worth that much?
Well, it could be worth that much when you need it to get out that plow. I got that tank, I got that tank for a thousand dollars less than what Chevy down in Jamesville wanted for that tank. Chevy down in Jamesville wanted twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Okay. Just seems like a lot of money for a fuel tank. Seems like a lot of money for a fuel tank.
Gotta have it.
Yeah, I, the other one was what, rusted out?
Yeah, it just started leaking. I was on, when we were doing that water meeting, we had the truck sitting up there and they loaded it, they were loading it and I looked over and there was gas dripping out of the bottom of the gas tank. It was just, it was the whole bottom of the gas tank was rotted out.
Okay, all right. That's the only question that I had. Any others?
That's the duct tape, duct tape and.
Might give us another year of usage.
All right, okay, we've got a motion in a second to pay the bills in the amount of forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and seventy-eight cents. Roll call, please.
Franklin?
Whitwer?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yep.
McNally?
Yes.
Johnny?
Brunick?
Yes.
Okay, all right, let's move on. New business, Quick Trip update.
This is Troy from Quick Trip. Troy would like to present what was presented at the Plan Commission last night.
We have Nancy Easels tonight.
Nice.
Good evening, Troy Melazova, Director of Real Estate with Quick Trip, one six two six Hope Street with us. Thanks for the time this evening. Just thought we'd take the opportunity to kind of do an informational update. I don't think there's any action tonight, but just an update on where we are with the Quick Trip project. As was mentioned, we had a good session with the Plan Commission last night. Through site plan approval, I just thought we'd give you kind of a brief overview of what project stands and kind of our plans here going forward. So on the left-hand side, you'll see a colored landscape plan. The project itself is about six acres on the new West Gate Court development. So we're buying a lot from the developers there. What our plan is would be to build a new Quick Trip facility. Roughly the facility be somewhere in the neighborhood of twice the size of what we have serving the community now. We've been of service since 2020 and people have been really happy with the service and the products we provide. But the biggest comment we do get is that the facility is a little small, not serving kind of the deep offerings that we stock at some of our other stores and let's face it, it's an older building that has served its purpose and we think moving forward, we can be of service to the community for the next generation with a nice new facility here in Cambridge. So the building itself is about eleven thousand square feet. About two thousand square feet of that is the car wash, which would be on the far, here I guess you'd call it the south end of the building. We also have, the convenience store itself would be about ninety-two hundred square feet. What that would offer us would be more space to provide deeper offering both in our grocery section, our hot food section, as well as bigger areas for our staff to work in, kitchen areas, bigger bathrooms. We'd have a nice family restroom available as well. Also a seating area. We have a seating area inside the facility roughly around, dozen folks could sit and have their breakfast, drink a cup of coffee, whatnot. Then also outside, you'll see kind of, there'll be two doors to the facility. One will be facing Highway twelve and eighteen and then one facing back towards the gas canopy, towards West Gate Court. So we'll have two entrances. You can kind of see those on the perspective rendering that you see on the right-hand side of these two drawings. So the picture there is taken from what would be the new intersection of Highway eighteen and, twelve and eighteen and West Gate Court. Looking back to the facility and you can kind of see those two entrances where we've got gables on the building covering each of the doors and the ways to get in. Towards Highway eighteen, we'd have two bays of parking. Towards West Gate Court, between the gas canopy and the store, we'd have another row of parking up against the building. And again, I think there was some discussion on parking last night in terms of having enough space for parking. Our current facility's got about fifteen parking spots plus another eight available at the pumps. We'd have somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty plus another twenty spots available at the pumps. And then to the west, we also have spots for trucks to park. We've got another spot area designated there for about nine, nine truck parking spots as well. To the south of the facility, we have a separate diesel canopy, so people with trailers, trucks, they don't have to get in with the regular gas customers underneath the traditional car fueling canopy and have those folks separated. We've got two driveways on West Gate Court, so what we're kind of trying to get the flow to do is kind of a big U shape through the site. So most folks will come in that first driveway, orientate to the gas, orientate to the parking. Again, if it's a truck, it can go all the way from the back of the store to the west, loop around, head back, fuel up, and then pull forward. Most folks will then exit out that second driveway, kind of keeping that nice flow through the side of folks. Modern stormwater design, everything will be curb and gutter. We've got some stormwater facilities, again, behind the truck parking towards the power lines. Modern landscaping, a nice landscape plan. Lighting plan, all fully cut off light fixtures, so the light shines down where you want it to as opposed to kind of the older style of, I call it the car dealer effect, where the light's gonna shine each and every which way, so it'll, the modern, modern lighting is a big difference. Our plan generally would be to add some coworkers to the staff, obviously a bigger store, more folks to take care of it, more folks, more space to clean. We'd be adding employees and payroll to the business. And then with that, our plan would be to start construction as soon as the weather breaks in the spring and then probably construct through the summer and be open sometime, late summer, early fall, for certain be open by this time next year. And with that, we'd have the new store open and then we'd go back and close the old store, decommission that, take out the fueling systems, take out the gas canopy, take out the tanks, go through the process of the DNR to get what they call a closure letter. And then we put that property up for sale, so it would be just like any other property available without any fueling systems in place that might give other people concern, so. With that, happy to answer any questions.
So you're gonna leave the old building standing then and just pull out the tanks?
Correct.
And this looks like a design for the one that's on Cottage Grove Road in Sprecker, is that the, very similar?
It is similar. This will actually be a nicer building, a little bit bigger.
How many pumps?
The pumps here, we've got about twenty gas pumps, which would be about the same as you'd have on Sprecker. The building here would be a little bit bigger than you see over there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mount Horeb, the one we did in Fort Atkinson, that building, if you've been on the south side of Fort Atkinson, that building would be similar. But will be a little, little nicer on the building than we were over at Sprecker and Cottage Grove Road.
Cause you can't compare to one on Rosie Billboard in South Avenue across.
Actually.
That's a big place.
Yeah, that is, that would be actually not that, that far different building-wise as far as the building.
Did we talk to them at Quick Trip about, you know what I'm gonna ask?
Yes, I did ask what their intentions are for the little chunk of land that's on the other side of power lines. I didn't get a chance to email you today because I didn't have your email, but I have it now. I need to ask our legal counsel on just what sorts of, what our ask would be, but mainly what we're looking for is to put our Welcome to Cambridge sign on that tip of the land there.
And just, I don't know if anyone told you, but the signs are, like the sign that's out here for the library and the sign that's in front of our building, they're of that same kind of design. So that's the type of sign it would be.
Yeah, happy to talk and work with you on that.
I asked you last night, but you've got parking there for semis that can back in. And so then the question was, are there going to be showers for drivers in the building?
Yeah, no, there won't be. So we've got some facilities with showers like put out on the interstates, but
kind of a travel center type location, we wouldn't have that here. That's not really our, our idea of what we're looking to do of service here. So no showers, no driver's lounge, no laundry facilities what we'd have at some of our travel center type locations.
And the trucks that you'll have there, they're for twenty-four hours?
That's it.
Yeah, we've put some signage in the sign plant to, again, ideas here, folks can come in, use the facility, use the restrooms, come in, grab something to eat. You know, bad weather in the winter, they've got somewhere to go as opposed to parking in the way where you're trying to plow, that type of thing. So we've got a spot for them, but we don't want somebody parking there for a week and coming back and picking up their truck a week later, so. An amenity, but not a long-term parking.
And then you expect that you'll be under construction here in the spring and have it open in June of two thousand twenty-four?
I don't know about by June, but we'll be under construction and hopefully we're open. Again, what we do with this is we go through the process, get the final permitting done, get the bidding done over the winter, get folks lined up to build it. But the sooner we can get through the process, the sooner we can get them on the schedule. But I, I would say by this time next year for certain, we'd be open. Hopefully we can get through it by maybe late summer, September, something like that.
Okay.
We did also last night talk about connectivity to this new site with the sidewalk that would lead from the old site around here, so people can get over there. It's kind of important. And Dean one is still worried about going across twelve eighteen, yeah. So that is something to be considered.
I'm excited about being able, I can walk to the Quick Trip now where I live, so I'll be excited to be able to walk to the new one as well.
And hopefully you will be able to sell the building.
Yeah, we're not interested in being long-term owners of the building once we have the new one open, so we're aligned in that interest of having it be reused and put back into service sooner rather than later.
All right, okay, any other questions?
Can I have the fueling system like Mount Horeb does for semis? Double filling?
Yes.
Okay, anything else, anybody else?
Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you for your time. We're excited, appreciate the time and effort. I know it's not a small endeavor in the community and we're excited to, looking forward to be partners going forward here for the next. We plan to have the building designed and useful for next three years, so thank you.
I appreciate the landscaping you're putting in so that it looks decent as people are coming into the Village of Cambridge, so I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, I'm gonna pull an audible. It's similar to what we have here, but Todd Schultz, we've got a lot of construction going on on twelve eighteen. Is there anything that you can give us as a timetable, when, how far that is along, what's going on with that? Yeah, if you don't mind. Well, Mike could do it too.
He could have thought of that before he pulled me up here.
Yeah, well, I told you I might do this, so.
So an update on where we're at. Tomorrow paving starts for completion on West Gate Court and including a little road patch to be done on Lucille. Tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, the final equipment for the metered intersection install will be started and completed. Lion Energy will be energizing on Friday and the intersection of the operational flashing lights on Monday. The final run of the south sewer is being completed. That should be done probably next week, Tuesday. And then we're done to just restoration work on the, on the rest of the site. Rose and matting and all that sort of thing to get everything buttoned up. So it's, the inconvenience on twelve eighteen, one thirty-four is just about come to a close.
We'll have lights up there and they'll be operational on Monday.
Well, they'll be flashing. I don't, you know, I'm not gonna get into the, the timing on when the DOT has them. You know, they'll flash for a while. I don't know the exact, I didn't, I didn't read the permitting and check with the contractor today about that, but.
Okay.
There'll be a, so a little bit of additional work on Monday for pavement marking because you can't install, paint the stop bars until the lights are energized. So there'll be a little overlap in the first part next week with some striping and painting for the pavement, but that's it.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, because I was gonna ask you a joke.
So are, when these lights go live, are you gonna put like a sign back further to alert people?
There's additional signage that gets installed, hard signage that gets installed in all directions in addition to metered intersection, yeah.
All right, but there's no like a rope, there's no like the arrow sign or lighted billboard or something saying new lights coming into Cambridge. I know, I know what you're saying about the stoplight.
There, I, to my knowledge, there was no additional electronic light flashing. I think the signs get flagged further out and that's, that's all that happens for right now. And that's why they're probably put on either a yellow or red flashing for a while to get everybody accustomed to it before the DOT switches them to fully operational.
Are we reducing speed out there?
Speed limits.
Coming into town?
Well, the speed limits aren't, aren't necessary to change. It's just everybody's gotta learn to follow the existing speed limit signs because I stand there on a daily basis and watch the digital.
Oh, yeah.
Readout. There's a law enforcement vehicle out there ten days ago that came whipping through at like thirty-eight miles an hour to pull into Quick Trip to get a cup of coffee and I'm like, well, that's a good example, so.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I, I don't, but I, I wanted to make sure that this was coordinated with fire, so. They know what the protocol is and how they can get through and there's a lot of barrels down there, but once they're removed, you know.
Yeah, everything should be out of there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Like I said, there's a little bit of additional striping that needs to be done.
Okay.
That can't be done till lights are energized.
That brings up a good point, Mark. Some of these lights have a siren activated where they'll go green. Is that gonna be part of that or no?
I, you know, that, that's all dictated by the DOT and the one hundred and eighty-seven page permit that I get to deal with, so. Yeah, I'm a, I, I can't speak to that as a DOT condition.
Okay, Mike, did you have anything to add here as a co-developer? Okay, Todd, thank you for indulging us. All right, we're gonna move on to the website recommendation. Tammy, I got a feeling this might be you.
My feeling is right.
Okay.
Okay. After looking into several websites, but mainly focusing on one, there's one that's called Town Web. And I'm looking for your approval to go with this website in the sake of getting things going in a faster way. I did include in your packets the, the price page and then the last page of where the signature is. This website has, they have like twenty-four seven customer service, which we do not have now. I have used this website in the past at my previous place of employment, so I know how to use it, which is a big benefit. They have, what I found was really good, they have a really good, what do I wanna say? Resident notification system. So there's emergency notifications that can be put on there and there's also like when things are updated on the website. So our constituents would go on to the, to the website and they could sign up for notifications for like any topics they wanted to. If they wanted to just get emergency notifications or if they wanted to get agendas when they're posted or minutes when they're posted or public works notices, they can sign up for that and every time that the website is updated, they would get a notification that they could go in and look and see what that was. So I really like that feature. It worked really good at my last place of employment. Really helped a lot with communicating with residents. They also have, what's also included in here, it's called their three-one-one. It's called K three-one-one and residents can go in there and they can type in tree down on Water Street or something. You know, if they can, they can still call, of course, but they can type it in and we'll get an automatic email. Probably go straight to Public Works, so we can set it up, so we go straight to Public Works. So things that are going on around the village, if somebody wanted to report a problem or an issue, they could do that through that page, three-one-one. Let's see, also have in there the cost of the website. Currently, we pay about twelve hundred dollars a year and have no customer support whatsoever. So you can see the price here is a little bit higher than that, but this would also be something that would be split with water and. But this would also be something that would be split with Water and Sewer. So that helps with the cost a little bit there. It also has, we decided to opt in for payments. So we could do payments online through the website like we currently do now. We could also, it's a payment portal and this is really a neat feature for utilities. This website company works really good with our Workhorse software that we currently use. And so for the utilities especially, since that's very important to us and we are busy with utilities a lot, customer can go in there, they can check and see what their bill is. They'd be able to check like how many gallons they've used, that kind of thing. So it's, it's all interconnected with Workhorse, what we currently use right now. And they can make their payment online if they want, or they can still come in, but they can go in and check what their utility bill is. Licensing, they hit, we opted in for that too. So like all of the forms that we have now for like building permits, dog licenses, they'll put them all on there. They'll be digitized and people can go on there and they can pay from that or they can still come in and pay. They don't have to pay online, but all of our forms would be on there and then it could be automatically sent to us in the office. Operators licenses, like I said, dog licenses, building permits, transient merchants, we're gonna call on that today. You know, all of those kind of things, they could, it'll be on the website.
Did the budget that we created have this as the cost?
Yes, that would go fall under that contracted services.
Okay. I find it very interesting that they call their growth plus package a free website design that costs us three hundred dollars a year. So it's really not free, is it?
No, and we didn't sign up for that.
Okay. I just, I'm just.
When I, when I used it previously, that cost was included with it and so the price was higher.
Got it.
But when Lisa and I spoke about it and we did a conference call with Town Web and HAY.gov at the same time, they're the ones that do the payment processing. We did that last Friday. That is just, we just, we decided we don't need a free website design every three years. I mean, they'll update all the time anyway. But another neat feature is we can put all of our own pictures and photos and things like that from around the village on our website to make it unique to us. So, yeah, we decided not to go with that. It's, it's listed here, but we didn't go with that. So.
So ninety-five hundred web package design, something we're doing?
What's that?
Called Lit Hub Design Package, nine thousand five hundred dollars.
We're not doing that either.
Oh, okay.
That would be, so the, what we decided on was just something, it's, it's, it's kind of a cookie cutter. It's like the same on several different Town Web sites that you could go to. Like I said, we can make it more unique to us by putting our own pictures of the village and that kind of thing. We didn't feel like we needed something that was that extravagant. We've got a lot of things on the website right now that's probably just, it's too much for what we need. Even though the price isn't, you know, it, customer service is really good with Town Web, just from using them in the past. And they can train you to put it all on there. You can give them a call or an email and say, you know, I've gotta get this agenda posted. I just don't have time. And you send it to them and they'll post it for you and they'll send out the notification for you. It doesn't cost you anything extra. So that's a nice feature, especially like around tax season. Things, my kid's really busy. I'm trying to think of other things I should mention.
So when a customer, he says, utility customer can go online and get their information and make payments. If they have questions, do they call this company or do they end up calling someone?
It'll, it'll direct them still to call the office if they have questions with their bill. So it would, it would go to.
Oh, a technical question, like password reset or those kind of things?
I think it would go to them, I guess I, I'm not quite sure. I mean, it wouldn't come to the office.
I would hope not, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be the website provider.
So we don't have to have a person that's a technical person on board?
No, no.
Great.
I really enjoyed using it before. It's pretty easy to use and I know a lot of constituents where I lived before really appreciated it. It was easy for them to find things and.
I've got a question, but I'm gonna wait. Does anybody wanna make a motion in a second so we can get into a discussion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the engagement of, sorry, I'm looking for the company's name.
Town Web.
Sorry?
Town Web.
Town Web, that's it. The engagement of Town Web as our website provider for the next three years for a total of fourteen thousand forty-five dollars over those three years.
Second. Okay. All right. Questions? I have one here. This gets split fifty-fifty, right?
Correct.
Okay. And Water and Sewer, are they, they're okay with this? Or we haven't, we haven't even given it to them yet?
We haven't met.
So, okay. And all the money is due in sixty days. So they send you an invoice as soon as you say, yeah, it's a go. And then we've got sixty days to give them the first year up, would be five thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. It just seems like we're paying them right away. Wouldn't we wanna maybe pay them during the year or quarterly to ensure that we're, we're getting timely service? And I, I don't know this because you know this company. Maybe this isn't, is not an issue, but I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't have any issues where I worked before. I think you, you pay in advance. That's what we're doing currently with the website that we have. And I have to give them a thirty-day notice if we decide not to continue with them. And I think that is up in January. And it takes approximately six to eight weeks to get this up and running. They'll take all of our content that we have on our current website and I'll put it into the new website and organize it all for us. So that's a really nice feature. Yeah, I, I don't know about the question you're asking, if that's.
I think, I think a lot of these hosts just look for, this is our annual fee and we'll, and you pay the annual fee all upfront for the year.
And that's what we do with the current one.
Yep.
And that's, that the protocol and the.
Just kind of what people do, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay.
I mean, here's the whole thing, from, from what I like about this one, that twenty-four, twenty-four seven, I mean, if, if we're not happy with something on our site, we'll just keep calling them twenty-four seven until they fix what we want them to fix.
Exactly.
So.
I don't know anybody who'd do that.
Who would do that?
Really call them.
All right, other questions, concerns, issues? Well, we've got a motion and a second, and this is a financial obligation, so I'm gonna ask for roll call, please.
Colin Beck?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yep.
McNally?
Yes.
Brunick?
Yes.
Whitwer?
Yes.
All right. We're gonna take care of that.
I'm so excited about getting a usable website.
Be nice, big improvement.
So you can get going.
This really sucks.
Did you intend new pictures for the website?
Do I need pictures?
Yeah, like, is that something you'd want the community to provide?
Could, but I kinda like taking pictures.
Walk for a run.
Promoting the local businesses, I think that'd be awesome.
I know, I would. I mean, I, I would probably go around and take pictures. But, yeah, if anybody has any they'd like to submit to me, that's fine.
I know there are a number of photographers in the, or amateur photographers in the village that might be really happy to.
I am in one.
There you go.
All the pictures in my office, I don't know if you've seen my office, those are all I've taken.
Okay. Well, thank you. And we'll look forward to seeing this in action. Moving on to unfinished business, we'll start off with Dancing Goat Sampling Plan.
I can start with this one. I just wanted to tell you about the plan that, that we submitted to you. Dan from MSA and I have worked on this, mostly Dan of course, because it's a lot of technical things. But I wanted to make sure it was consistent with the conversations that we've had and our obligations under our, under our ordinance. We, we came up with this in response to our last discussion where it kinda seemed like we were talking past each other a little bit in terms of what the village was looking for. And so I just wanted to clarify that this is a plan that, that we've come up with that would, that would reflect the kinds of things that we'd be looking for. It's, the important things I'd say to, to point out is that it's a twenty-four hour proportional sample flow. Then it has these dates on here. January thirty-first were what we were proposing that, that the Dancing Goat could take for drawings that would reflect this. And then the, the date that we put for it to be operational would be June first. And it would be, we've had some discussions about what the parameters would be that we'd test for. This would clarify that it's BOD and TSS. And for now, that could change if, if we needed to adjust that for any reason. And then the other thing I'd point out about this is that it would have us, it would ask Dancing Goat to have the lab where they send their test results, just copy us on the results. So we thought it's pretty straightforward and kinda gets at the things that we were, that, that we've been discussing.
Did you also conclude our plan that we submitted to the board for review?
So we had a plan at our last meeting that the Dancing Goat had submitted. And there were some, there were some questions that the engineer had and some concerns that the engineer had that this plan is designed to, to sort of reconcile those and, and come up with something that, that our engineer would recommend for the village.
But the plan that we were asked to provide to the board for them to review from us that we submitted was not filed under the board.
If I could just speak to that real briefly?
Well, that's a yes or no, but yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Dan, if you could just introduce yourself.
Yes, Dan Levy with MSA Professional Services. So from our standpoint, you know, we understand that the village directed the Dancing Goat to present a plan for sampling their wastewater. And that plan was provided by the Dancing Goat. It was dated October first. At that point, MSA was asked to review that plan. We did that, we put together, and that plan was, I think, four or five pages long. MSA reviewed it, put together a rather long memo with a number of questions and comments, sent that back to the Dancing Goat. Dancing Goat provided a reply to those questions and comments. At that point, it occurred to me that, you know, we were, this was a lot of back and forth with, over a lot of information that, quite frankly, in my opinion, was not very relevant to the situation. So what we, what MSA tried to do with, with the help of your village attorney was to put together a very simple and concise plan. We've got it down to a page and a half. And it simply addresses the, the relevant points. And that is that the village is requesting that the Dancing Goat present a plan, a physical plan, in other words, a drawing that shows the equipment and configuration of equipment to collect flow proportional composite wastewater samples. When that plan is submitted, the village will review it. Upon the village's approval of that plan, the Dancing Goat would have those facilities constructed and the Dancing Goat would then operate and maintain those facilities at their cost. And as your, your attorney said, initially, the samp, the sampling parameters would be as required by the village. And initially, we've identified only two, BOD, biochemical oxygen demand, which is a measure of the organic strength of the wastewater, and total suspended solids. We talked to Steve Sainsbury out at the wastewater treatment plant. Those were the only two parameters that he is concerned about currently. As far as frequency of sampling, our recommendation is that samples be collected every day that, that the facility is in production and/or providing cleanup of their equipment. And again, that would be dictated by the village and subject to change. If, if you find that the sample results are very uniform and that they don't indicate high-strength wastewater, then that frequency of sampling can certainly be reduced. So I'm just here tonight to, you know, try to address any questions that you might have.
All right.
I really love the replies from Dan with the ability to speak.
I'll, I'll get to you in a moment. I'm just trying to do this in order, but you will have an opportunity. Okay. Do you, any clarification, anything with what Dan has shared?
No, that's right. We just tried to make it, we just tried to boil this down to the simple things that, that MSA recommended would be as part of any plan.
Okay. And has the Dancing Goat received a copy of what we have here? Okay. And before I ask them, Chris, do you have anything as, from, from where you're sitting on?
Just from a standpoint of Water and Sewer, we, we have not presented this to the other members of Water and Sewer.
Yeah, we did a conditional, what we did was a conditional approval and it could be that.
Sections three and four of their plan?
Thinking that maybe it was, we were gonna be in a situation where we could kinda work with that plan and tweak it.
Right.
This is a pretty significant change from that. So it could be that it makes sense to procedurally to go back to Water and Sewer. We just came up with, we just sent this as of last Friday because we knew we wanted to have something for this village board meeting. There could be, it could be that, that it's enough of a change, that it makes sense to have Water and Sewer. And especially, that might make sense if the Dancing Goat has significant concerns that they couldn't meet this plan especially.
Okay.
That might make sense.
All right. Nick, I promised you, do you have any comments regarding the sampling plan or?
I, yeah, well, I'll just chime in. So I know this seems very simple on paper. I do think it would make a lot of sense.
If you can just introduce yourself.
Sean Dodd from the Dancing Goat, for this to go back to Water and Sewer. So I just wanna remind you guys why we're here. There was an incident in May that we were notified of in July. We received a letter from Jane that said, you guys will enact this ordinance to put the sampling on. We've had months of conversations. We've tried to communicate with COWC, Water and Sewer, and now we're at a point where we're working behind an attorney. And frankly, we need some village leadership, we need some partnership. And we are not gonna solve this issue if we completely forget about communicating. And that's kinda where we're at right now. This plan, while it may seem simple on paper, for what I'm estimating, this is gonna cost us close to fifty thousand dollars. I could hire someone. And, and this is, this is a fact-finding mission that Dan, when he was here last at Water and Sewer, clearly stated he did not have any context to, to the situation at COWC. And he did not have context to our business. So while this seems very simple on paper, I wanna remind you guys, the letter that we received on July twenty-seventh, which was, we are just trying to keep the, the system stable for the community, as are we. If we are not communicating, test results do not come back until six days later. We're completely missing the boat. And, and I'm just begging you guys for some village leadership on this. We cannot work directly behind council. And if that's how you guys are choosing to do business with us, well, then frankly, we'll, we'll have to get council involved on our side. And I don't mean that as a threat, but, but we need some partnership in this. And I want you guys to understand, this is not a small, simple plan. This is, this is forty to fifty thousand dollars for us to enact this. And so I just think that there's a lot to be understood here from Dan's position of our business. And, and frankly, we need village leadership. We can't work behind an attorney that is, frankly, this plan didn't go to Water and Sewer. And now Chris is sitting up here seeing it, just like us. We saw it for the first time on Friday. And then we're asked to come here and respond to it two days later. It's just not an appropriate relationship. And I ask you guys to just seriously consider how you work with businesses in the community.
From, from my standpoint, I mean, I, I've had multiple conversations with Chris throughout this that have just been baffling. I mean, one time he informed me that he was informed he was paid in a bad faith. I don't really know what personal mandality you have against us. All we've ever asked you to do is follow the rules. So I, I, I just don't understand how it got to this point. And it's just, it's really disappointing. I, you know, we come here every, we're here as often as you guys are, even though we don't live here. And if you take a look at what we submitted, there, one of the comments that really razzed me is when you said that you not communicating to us doesn't relieve us of responsibility. And when we never wanted to relieve you of responsibility.
I'm gonna cut it there, Nick. I'm just trying to get information.
I would love to submit our plan to you guys to review next to this because we have elements of communication in there that are literally designed. elements of communication in there that are literally designed to mitigate ongoing issues. Like if you get a report from COWC that there's an ongoing issue, you should call us immediately so if we're not in the plant, we can send someone to check for valves, we can check trains. I mean, it's, it's common sense, but it got axed out of nowhere with no conversation and with a smile on her face because, you know, you're sticking it up mine. And it's just, it's, it's, it's really disappointing.
Thank you. All right. So this still, still has to go back then.
My suggestion is that this, we move it to Water and Sewer so we can discuss it amongst Water and Sewer, and then we tweak it as need be, and then send it back to the board. I think these dates that are on here lend to that.
I think that makes sense. I think when we did that at Water and Sewer, we were thinking we would be able to tweak the existing plan. And then it turns out, really, it, this is more than a tweak. So, yeah.
All right. Nick, one last.
At Water and Sewer, we have a chance to discuss this because I was told it didn't matter what we thought of the plan at the last one, and all discussion was ceased. And then there is a conditional approval. So if it's going back to Water and Sewer, there should probably be an actual discussion about it. It shouldn't just be another blow-by.
So how, I'm just, I'm confused.
Nope, you disagree?
How did, how did professionals get involved without Water and Sewer and how did it get to us?
We, we reviewed their plan in Water and Sewer. We approved Sections three and four of their plan. But we also had a laundry list of questions from our engineer. Did we think about this? Did we think about, you know, different items? And so we took that, took that into consideration, and we asked for help for, you know, because I'm not a water expert, neither is anyone else on our board. Maybe the closest is Steve Strass.
Who won't show up to meetings anymore.
But, so we have to count on our professionals. We have to count on our engineers and our, and our legal-
So then we have to close once. So I guess I'm confused why they, why it's coming to us before it goes back.
So here's what we did at Water and Sewer. So there were kind of five pieces, as I recall, of the, of the original plan. And we knew right offhand that there were certain of them that we wouldn't want to have any plan. It, it was more like a contract than it was like a, like a permit or like a plan. It had obligations of the village that we knew we wanted to strike. And so what we decided to do to keep it moving forward, we were trying to not have to wait until the next Water and Sewer meeting to come up with another whole, another plan out of whole cloth. So Water and Sewer gave conditional approval of those, of the substantive sections of the, of the sampling plan, but conditioned on approval by MSA.
But not by us. We asked to see it for approval beforehand, and I was told it didn't matter what we thought of the plan, even though it's supposed to be our plan that we're submitting.
So this is, this is what happened procedurally. We decided, it really, it, it's, I think it's a fair point to say this is no longer a tweak of the, of the plan that we started off with because there's some fundamental differences in how we're approaching it. And so-
But the elements of Section three and four are implemented within this plan.
That's right.
Right.
Yep.
I, I, yeah, we haven't had a chance to respond to that. Bill, you're asking a great question. There, there's professional services that the tax dollars, the taxpayers in this community that are paying for it. Dan was brought into this without any context.
Has never come to CEO.
And so that, that's, that's where I'm asking for leadership. Water and Sewer, village, you shouldn't be engaging professional services for a recommendation if they don't understand the situation. He can, he can recommend a, a sampling device, which is what he's done, but to not have an understanding of what the COWC impacted or how our business operates, which is what we tried to put in our plan, it, it just doesn't make sense. And so that's where I'm asking for, Bill, so you're just on this.
You guys have to recognize that there's really two plans at play here. We have to come up with a plan as, from a village perspective on how to protect the wastewater. And that plan is, this is what we, this is what we require of you according to ordinances and laws and, and statutes by the state of Wisconsin. That's what this is. This is what we are required. Now, you guys will take this and say, with, knowing these are the requirements, we will create a plan to meet these requirements. So there's two plan, plans at play here. We do have a plan, and then you have a plan on how to implement it.
So Paul, part of it is, is we, we went and worked directly with the COWC. That's what was in our plan. BOD, TSS, the frequency, the machine. I went and sat at that table. Chris was in the meeting room. We truly are trying to partner. We want to keep the system safe. That's, that's ultimately what we want to do. But, but I, I'm encouraging you guys to go back to the initial letter. This is a fact-finding mission. We don't know what happened at COWC. Frankly, it was a breakdown in communication, and now we're talking about a $50,000 plan. And, and it doesn't seem like there's any communication between COWC, Water and Sewer, professional services, the village board. And it's a giant quagmire. This is a small town. It should not be this hard. We got this letter on July 27th, and now we're talking about a plan to be implemented by June 1st. That's 10 months. Why, I mean, what, why are we making it this hard?
We actually- The, the village government goes slow.
Yeah, we put a, a later date in there, trying to, trying to be generous to you.
Understood. And, and, and part of this ordinance, though, just so you guys are clear, part of it is, if, if what we're doing is not up to standards, the village does it and it bills it back to us. So if we're going to make this so damn complicated, like, there is that aspect of it. And I don't want, again, like, we want to partner together, but, but us working, our only point of engagement is, is attorney letters that we get once a month. I mean, that is, is not appropriate.
If you, Paul, you're a reasonable person. If you go back and read the document that we submitted, it's not a contract. There's no teeth, there's no consequences. There's an area of expectations. And in that expectations, it, it goes through communication with us. And part of it is about promptly letting us know when there is an issue of wastewater. And the reason we put that in there is because if there's an ongoing issue, we want to mitigate it. And if you actually review the plan that we submitted, there's, there's no consequences, teeth, there's nothing in there that you should be afraid of. All we're asking you to do is be an active participant in managing the water system. That's it. We ask you to follow DNR regulations. We ask you to communicate with us when you are communicated there's a problem. And then the reason that we're asking that is because we've gone to COWC and we've said, call us directly. Tell us when there's an issue. And make camp.
They can't, correct.
They can't. And it's, and it's ridic, because at the end of the day-
Sandsbury said he would, and along with the COWC board. So, so we sat in the room and they said, we will notify you along with the village the same day. So, so that's where, it's like, why, why are we as a business having to work around you guys? It just, it doesn't make sense. Again, we're, we're trying to be good stewards here, but, but the engagements from outside professional services that don't understand our business and are not working back through these boards appropriately, it's not, it's not constructive. And we need to get past that. We can, we can spend $50,000 on a machine and keep coming back to these meetings, but it's like, are we really serving the community? Are you guys using taxpayer dollars well?
Are we doing $50,000?
To be fair, the message that we heard from Water and Sewer was, tell us what you need to do. Tell us what we need to do. That's the message that we got from you. So this is what we're doing. We're telling you what we need you to do.
That's what you need us to do?
That's what you asked us to do. You asked for specific numeric limits. You asked for us to be very specific about what we want to work. So that's what we did.
You have to be specific. There's no numbers in there. There's no limits in there.
Yeah, we're not putting-
Incredibly disingenuous statement. There's no limits in there.
All right. I think, I'm, I'm going to call the, I'm going to terminate the-
That's what happened in Water and Sewer last time. We had tried to have a discussion too. It just got terminated.
Well, but I do think this has to go back to Water and Sewer. I think Steve Strass will be there. I don't know if Ted will, but you've got the, the rest of the committee to work on this. I mean, they're in a better position, I think, to get through at least these preliminary rounds.
I think that's right. I think what will help is if we have specific feedback on what part of this plan is untenable for you. Because we, we've had these discussions over and over. You asked for specific plans. We gave you a specific plan. We want to know what, I think it will help Water and Sewer to know exactly what is objectionable.
All of the communication parts that make us a joint, we started a joint partnership to work on water like three and a half years ago.
See, that, so this is the concern. If, if the request to Water and Sewer is that it become back a contract again, where the village has obligations to fulfill-
It's an expectation of good partnership.
All right. But we're getting three conversations here. November 21st is when the Water and Sewer meets. All right. Will you have enough time, gentlemen, to look at this and to put your thoughts in writing and be prepared to go to the Water and Sewer and be heard at that point?
I mean, maybe. I mean, we'll, we'll have time to get there, but you're asking us to evaluate an entire plan?
Mark, this is not that simple. What, so what MSA is recommending, not only a sampling device, but a meter and a flow proportional meter that we have to read. I, I don't know if you guys actually read this. So, so the cadence of we get these, these meeting minutes or we get the agenda on Friday, that's the same, we got, we got this attorney letter 10 minutes before. Again, not appropriate, why we're waiting this long. We're five months in. Sure, Mark, we'll try. This is not simple.
How many contractors did they call up before that?
And we're not, we're not water experts either. And so, again, we're, we're incurring professional fees on our end.
All right. I'm just trying to move it- Do you have access to anyone that has a sip, a system like this that we could check in with?
I do want to say that, you know, there was a letter, again, from the village attorney on July 27th to Sean Dotson. The village requests that Dancing Goat submit plans for sampling and flow monitoring landfills. I mean, it's not a new request.
So there with no context, they didn't answer any calls or emails for months. And then we submitted a plan.
I'm just pointing out that this went to Dancing Goat.
Okay. All right. I'm going to, we're going to terminate this.
Mark, maybe you can-
Can I just make a comment here?
Yes, please.
My, I, I don't know that a committee meeting is the best place to like work this shit out. Sorry. Stop. Oh.
Yes, we're being televised.
Because, I mean, to me, the boards should be like approving, so I don't know if the Water and Sewer Committee needs to have a subcommittee or a couple of people that, with staff and professional services that we deem appropriate.
And us, hopefully.
And, right, sit down with, sit down with Dancing Goat and their side to hash this stuff out. Because hashing it out in a meeting like this, I don't think is a good use of anyone's time.
Paul, I agree. We, we've done that twice. We've been in the room with Brunick, Strass, Lisa. Jane was not there for that meeting. Then we went to COWC. So we're more than willing to do that. I just want you to understand, we've done that twice now. My ask, Mark, if you're going to ask us to be prepared on a dime, I, I strongly, strongly asking professional services that are making recommendations to the board, they need to have background. And your, your committees need to be sharing with them the context to date. It can't just be an attorney letter or no rec, understanding of what COWC instance occurred. So it, it's a partnership. You can't just put it on us. Paul, I agree with you. We've done it twice. We're trying. And that's where we got in this giant quagmire of who's making the decisions. I was getting different information from Brunick, Strass, Sandsbury. Everything's kind of running in circles. Again, we just, we're happy to move it forward, but we've got to keep wasting time.
And, and if we need to have somebody from COWC there as well, then, I mean, that's, I think, Chris, that would be your call?
They, they don't want, uh-
They don't want to be involved?
No.
Okay.
Is that appropriate, though? And so what? They don't want to be involved.
I mean, it's a village duty to come up with the sampling.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a, we-
Because they want to be insulated, because they want to be insulated and protected from any sort of, of animosity that may be arising.
And it's also made up of Oakland as well. It's not just, it's not just Cambridge.
And, and to be fair, the Dancing Goat gets their water from the village of Cambridge. They don't get their water and sewer from COWC. So they are not COWC's customer. They're our customer.
But they're making the requirements of what they need to do to test.
No, they are, the villages.
The villages.
That's a, it's a village requirement.
Well, that's all changed since this came up. When this first came up, I asked, why aren't we giving them our specs? And the answer was, they know what they are. They know what the specs are. And now we're giving, three, six months later, we're giving them our specs.
And I got specs when I went to the COWC meeting with Brunick. So I didn't have the same experience that they're not willing to engage. I, they were very happy to have me in the room and again, to express that we want to be good stewards of the system. They gave us two limits in the room that day. They gave us a machine to use. That's what went in our plan.
All right. What we're going to try to do, gentlemen, I, I realize you, you don't have a lot of time. You've got a week. Bring this back to our own Water and Sewer. All right? And hopefully you'll have a full slate. Maybe Ted won't be there. But to be able to talk about it, and I don't know the time-
Mark, can we go off of Paul's recommendation to not try to handle this in a, in a board meeting? So again, I, I think again, for a week, and, and I, if you're going to ask us to be ready in a week, I want professional services up to speed on it.
I think it's unrealistic to expect them to have an answer to, if this is what we want them to come up with, for them to have only a week to come up with what they're going to do, I don't think it's reasonable, quite frankly. To drop a plan and everything?
No, no, no. You're not suggesting drop a plan by next, by Water and Sewer.
No, just be prepared for a discussion.
Just provide feedback on what part of the plan.
And, and which, which is very, very complicated. It's not an easy ask what's on paper.
We, yeah, we don't even, if you read this, we still have to figure out how we're going to do this.
And you have till January 31st to do that.
Well, apparently not, Chris, because we're talking about doing this next week, right? So we're, we're to be prepared for next week's conversation.
You don't have to. This, this dates January 31st, 2024.
We're trying to actually work to get the issues done and, and, and solve problems in the community and not just provide dates and then not answer phone calls and screw everyone over.
Do you have other people who've implemented something like this? Do you know of other companies or organizations?
Yes, and I'm not, and I'm not going to disagree that it's an expensive endeavor. When you say $50,000, depending on exactly how you do it, I'm not questioning that. It's not going to be easy. And I told Sewer and Water Committee that many months ago, that it's not an easy endeavor to particularly meter and sample very well-posed wastewater. It's not a, it's a slow-myred.
Fact-finding mission for one incident that, that frankly, could have been solved from communication. Two instances, but the one back in December, we, we communicated, we had communication with COWC. We were not informed of the one in May. We found out in July via an attorney letter. So again, we can, we can do all this testing stuff, but if we're not working on communication, we're going to miss the boat again. Can't wait six days to get a test result back to say the system screwed up. Steve will see it that morning.
What happens if there's an event, right? And it wasn't us? And then this president has put on, what's the next business he owns for $70,000 sampler?
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you, thank you. I'm gonna, at this point, we're gonna stop here. It's gonna go to Water and Sewer for at least a discussion. Doesn't have to be finalized, but at least keep it moving. Get input if it's available from Dancing Goat. If they need more time, I would hope that we would understand that and we could accommodate.
You have more time. It's in this, it's in the plan. It's in the proposed plan.
If anyone sensible wants to show up, that's not gonna be there at Water and Sewer to help us out, it'd be great. Because it's, it's clear that there's something personally going on here with me and Mr. Brunick. That I just, I don't understand why, why the thirty first is we have so much time. All right, we're meeting next week. It just seems incredibly disingenuous. And out of character for, for who I thought you were.
All right. That's.
Bottom, bottom line, you guys, if, if you're asked to present something at, or to review this, if you guys aren't prepared for that, saying we're not prepared to review this at that meeting is an acceptable answer.
Thank you. That's, that's a hundred percent news to me, I think to him, and thank you.
Yeah, because a lot of times we get the agenda literally on Friday and it's show up on Tuesday and try to scramble. Last time we had thirty six questions from MSA with no background to our business. So, it, it is a very hard cycle. Paula, I think McNally keeps going back to, hey, next week, hopefully we have something. Is there appetite that we can actually put in a room and not do this in a board setting? Or do we have to work off Tuesday nights?
Would the board consider an impartial third party arbiter at my expense to do this? Clearly, I think there's some, there's a couple of speed bumps here in terms of personal issues.
Again, gentlemen, I'm gonna ask that we stop here because I think if you have a chance to look at this, even if it's not complete, put your thoughts together. Bring it to Water and Sewer. You know, just go with what we have. It's already scheduled, the meeting. If we can do something, we can. If we can't, we can't.
The meeting might be scheduled, Mark, but if they're not prepared, they're not gonna be prepared.
Well, I wanna see that.
It's a lot more concise than the five-page plan that we received from you.
Scary what?
It's a lot more concise than the five-page plan that we received from the Dancing Goat.
Well, concision isn't always the best thing, Mr. Brunick, right?
So, it shouldn't take you that long, though. That's what I'm saying. It's just, it's just a page and a half.
You're giving us a, a, like a list of pros and then you're asking us to go and price us out contractors, see if it's economically feasible, see if this is even gonna be a solution to what we're doing. I mean, that's not, and plus, he's got, what, another three sixteen hour days this week? I got another two sixteen hour days this week on top of all my work next week. Yeah, totally, totally reasonable. Hundred percent. I'll see what we can get done.
Okay. I, I, I understand. I'll be at Water and Sewer.
Thank God.
Well, I could go with that, but I'm gonna just, you know, we'll, we'll stop it.
Mark, I'm just gonna tell you right now, we won't be prepared. So, to all the points, that's an acceptable answer. I'm not gonna scramble and, and myself over this when this is how we're doing business.
I understand.
An attorney letter on Friday and show up on Tuesday. So, frankly.
You're always invited to come to our open meetings, whether or not you're prepared or not. It's always invited.
Okay, so we're, we'll, we're gonna table this until after we hear back from Water and Sewer then.
All right.
All right, is that?
Works for me.
And we'll go with that. Nick, thank you.
Thank you.
See you on Tuesday. All right. Fire Commission update. Chris?
We had a meeting November second, twenty twenty three. In attendance was Rockdale, myself, and Oakland. We didn't have representatives from the town of Lake Mills or Christiana there. We had a quorum, so it was a legal meeting. It was in Oakland. We had an election for a pro tem and I was elected as pro tem to run the meeting. We had public comment for two minutes per person. We also, we had public comment at the, the beginning of the meeting as well as at the end. We replaced the tires on three apparatuses. There was a request made by the fire chief that per NFP standards, NFPA standards, that some tires rot of periodicity, so we had to approve those. So, it was kind of nice being able to approve a, a budget item. And then we made some, we had some actions that were made dealing with financial affairs and trying to abide by the IGA. We had specific IGA segments pulled out on the agenda to discuss our, our frustration with whether or not we are doing it or not. One of those being the president and treasurer must sign checks. That's still not being done as of that meeting. So, we, Alicia Hines made a motion that the president and treasurer must sign the checks. And everybody voted for it. It was, it passed. Even though it states it in the IGA, we made another motion to kind of put more weight on that. We decided that Attorney Zach was going to send YPTC some, a letter stating that we needed information for the budget in the interim. While that was out there, Attorney Zach resigned his services to the Fire Commission. There was, there was a discussion about that we needed to stop the EMS folks, needed to stop shredding documents and bills until we confirm how to handle them. And I don't believe our treasurer got any joy with that, any, any movement forward with that, so. We made a motion to take the, the EMS director off of any kind of.
As a signatory.
As a signatory for books. And that passed. And anything else we can discuss in future agenda item.
I was at the meeting, which is why I knew about the signatory thing.
We discussed also the, the branding that's going on, the new ambulance, the branding that's being worn by EMS officials and everything. And we made a motion to stop any kind of changing to the branding. Now, we made sure that we didn't say, you know, somehow that got complicated or got, you know, confused, that we said no more uniforms. We didn't say no more uniforms. We stated that it was no more changing to the emblems or, you know, the whatever was existing already. Because that's a costly endeavor, getting those wraps. It's about four, five thousand dollars on an ambulance. That was not approved. I was told it was grant money that was used for it, but still, it's, it's, it's money, so. So, we made a motion to cease the changing of emblematic. And that is about it. We have another meeting. We were gonna have a meeting on the fifteenth of this month. But I believe that's been moved out to December fifteenth. But our Secretary Treasurer is here. She can verify that if you'd like.
Okay, well, I have a question for you. The budget that was previously submitted, Cambridge's share is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and five cents. Is that correct?
I believe so, but, you know, it's.
Well, don't we have to vote on that?
It's a work in progress, right?
Well, I think, so, the Audit and Finance Committee has gone through our budget and, and we've balanced our budget with that amount in there for Fire and EMS. It's gonna be a public hearing at the end of this month? At the end of this month is the public hearing for the budget. And then at that meeting is when the budget will come before this board. Fire and EMS is part of that budget. I mean, I, I think what Jan has stated this, at the, as public comment, I mean, I've got serious concerns about approving a budget for Fire and EMS when we don't even know what they're spending the money on. We don't know how they spent last year's budget, this year's budget money. We don't know how that compared to, you know, where they are compared to what was budgeted. We have, we are blind here and I just don't, it makes me uncomfortable.
I would agree with you a hundred percent, Paula. I, I mean, I'm sitting on the commission and I don't, and I've been on Audit and Finance, you know, numerous years. And I know what the expectation is from a village standpoint. And we don't, we, we're not there. And no, I couldn't in, you know, in good faith, report to you as trustees that we are ready to approve any kind of budget.
Did we used to get that information?
We did.
How many years has it not been?
Since Bob Salav left.
Which is, I don't know what that.
Two years?
Two years, we haven't had anything?
So.
We haven't had any in those, in those two years since Bob Salav has been gone. We've been able to see the books. Were, were we able to see the books prior, while he was there?
Yes.
Yeah, you have a bookkeeper that was, that would come to meetings, Fire Commission meetings, and they would give EMS director reports, financial reports, and fire chief reports.
So, I, I have to say, there cannot be, in my opinion, Paula, I agree with you. We can't approve any kind of budget. And so, the books aren't seen and what it was spent on. That's just the way it is, otherwise we're not, we as trustees are not being good stewards of tax revenue.
So, where we run into an issue with this all the time is, is unlike other things that are part of the IGA. If, if a majority of the municipalities approve the Fire and EMS budget, then we are all committed to paying what our share is. So, so we can, we can say we don't want to pay it. But we also need to be very aware that if three of the other municipalities say yes, then we're still going to have to pay that without having any of the additional knowledge that we're looking for.
You know, and if three of them decide that they don't, what it states in the IGA is it reverts back to last year's budget.
Which is what?
Which is what, what, which what they'll argue is that's all they're asking for anyway. But, but my concern is in this year's budget, there's a, what, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus?
Two hundred and five.
A two hundred.
It's changed.
Two hundred and five thousand dollar surplus in the budget. If they're gonna have that kind of surplus in the budget, why are they not reducing the amount of money that they're asking from the municipalities?
And that's exactly what Bill, Bill you brought up at the, at the initial financial meeting that we had.
Yeah.
Instead of holding on to that for rainy day fund, you know, why not rebase the municipalities?
All these funds that have been spoken about, you know, the emergency fund, the regular funding of the Fire EMS, we still have no knowledge of what they are.
Well, I've done some checking. If you look at the previous Oakland board meeting, Sheila reported that Fire EMS has over seventy-five thousand in their checking account right now, a hundred and forty thousand in a savings account, and about thirty thousand in the Deerfield Bank.
So, is that?
As, can I finish?
Sorry.
And then the Cambridge Fire Department, which is also part of, has two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in their checking account. Right now, they have four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that organization, sitting there. And if you add, I thought it was two fifty, the budgeted profit. Plus, they're gonna probably do better this year budget than last year because of the rates they raised. So, I figured we're gonna have over seven hundred thousand dollars in the bank by the end of next year, which I think is a little excessive for a million four budget. I also did some checking online. There's an organization called the GFOA, which is Government Financial Office Association. And what's the recommendation on a budget reserve organization should have? And the recommendation is a two-month reserve or a three-month reserve. And that's about two to three hundred thousand dollars.
One of the things that we'd have to look into though, I mean, you're looking at numbers in a, in a, in a checking account. You don't know if some of those numbers were donated to the Fire Department to be saved for a specific thing.
They're not, I asked, they're not, they're not designated for anything.
Right there, because yes, they are.
Okay, well, they're not in your financials as designated.
You talked to our treasurer.
Yes.
He explains to you for an hour and a half, two hours. So, he has explained what we do with our money.
Yes.
Just to let the board know that our business, we last night were taking fifty thousand? Fifty thousand dollars and we're investing that into a CD that's gonna be in a, I think it's a thirteen-month CD that's gonna interest and that money is gonna go into an account for truck fund. And then we're gonna take some of our fundraising money that we raised, another fifty thousand dollars, and do the same thing to earn money there in a truck fund. So, we're gonna have over a hundred thousand dollars that the Fire Department is spending on this new truck that we need.
Where the Fire Commission does not really get, um, the ability or the foresight, depend, depending upon how you look at it, to set aside money to buy that, that new truck when, you know, when it's competitive and precious. And it, and it's, and it's difficult to buy these trucks because it takes so long to build them and they cost a lot of money. We're trying to do our part to, 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 to help move that direction of getting what we need.
Yeah, and I, my point would be that both the Fire Department and the joint Fire Emergency Medical Commission should get together and develop a long-range plan and reserves and put it together, not wait, not just have a bunch of money in the bank and then come back and say, yeah, but we need that money for this, or we need an ambulance, or we need that. And that's exactly what happened at the budget meeting.
There it used to be, reserve money, set aside for all those things, up until May of twenty-two. So, where that reserve money went, one doesn't know. But there's always been a plan for money to be put away and reserved.
Seems like everything fell apart in the last couple of years then.
That is correct.
That is correct, sir.
It's at, it's at the commission level that that has been done and passed.
True.
Sheila, you have a question? Comment?
I have a couple of comments. The other thing that we, we don't realize, the general public probably doesn't realize, is that, for instance, the SEBA packs, the air packs that the Fire Department has to have, those have been paid for by money that they've raised, either through grants or fundraising. And those are not in the Fire Commission budget. Those things run about three thousand dollars a piece per set, right?
They have been bought up many years ago.
Right, right. And they are due to be replaced. So, you know, there, there are, we as a Fire Commission have not done good job. There are things that should not be, had to be fundraised for that we should be able to, you know, so, so we have a better job to do there. I understand your point, but there are more, there's more going on with the fundraised dollars than, than people realize. I also wanted to just point out something that I was trying to understand with respect to staffing and, and, you know, what happens if the budget goes back to last year's budget? And how we live with that. And, you know, Paula, you made a comment about that and somebody else did too. Interestingly enough, as I've been getting acquainted with all of the documents involved with being Secretary and Treasurer, I noticed that the discussion about Lake Mills started much earlier than I thought it did. And I also noticed that the budget number, staffing budget number for the EMS typically has only been between five and fifteen thousand dollars increase per year in a normal year from one to the next.
Minus the year where they, they all went.
Correct, correct. But unless I'm not seeing something correctly here, it looks like in twenty twenty-three, the twenty twenty-three budget, the staffing estimate went up almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, and, and also interesting is that the proposed budget for twenty twenty-four did not go up even close to the hundred and seventy-five thousand that I just learned is estimated to staff for Lake Mills. So, it makes me think that this might have been in the works a lot longer. I'm not sure. But, yeah, we have to start asking a lot more questions and, you know, as municipalities, we need to be more active participants.
Tammy, you had some questions from a treasurer, the treasurer's standpoint that you wanted to bring to light?
Yeah. As far as like the housing amounts. As far as making payments on the house, it's a house payment?
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, it's not rent, but it's, it's housing payment of eight hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Well, actually, it's one annual payment of approximately twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, because housing is listed here, well, let's see, it's, it's not under proposed anymore, under the twenty twenty-four.
But it probably works out too. I have to look.
Okay. The other thing was the net income, two hundred and five thousand dollars is the new amount. It was two hundred and fifty-six thousand. On this new budget that I have here, it says two hundred and five thousand, nine thirty-seven and forty-nine cents.
Is that because of now it's legal expense before there, because I recall that.
That could be.
I, I just don't know.
Yeah. So, I mean, I guess my question is, why is there even being shown in that income?
Right. We should, we're a nonprofit, yeah.
Right, and I would think that should go back to the municipalities.
Yeah, Bill, Bill said the same thing. I, I'm guessing that, um, I don't know how much experience that they've had with, with doing a budget. I don't know. Meaning the people that, you know, started putting it together.
The retirement amount.
Yes.
It looks like it's the full amount, whereas by, I think it's statute.
Collective bargaining agreement?
Collective bargaining agreement. The employees require to play, pay half of that, but it's budgeted for the full amount. So, that's another question that I had.
Valid question.
What's that?
It's a valid question.
Okay. The town of Lake Mills, okay, so, let's say we're in this contract with them now. We're basing this on a capita. That's how. We're basing this on a per capita, that's how we're getting paid from them, but the rest of the municipalities are following the IGA based on equalized value. So figuring it out, the town of Lake Mills has more per capita than the village of Cambridge, but they're paying less than what the village of Cambridge is paying per equalized value. So-
But one, one, one distinction, though, Tammy, is that they're, they're paying for only EMS service.
Okay.
We're paying for EMS and fire. So that, that-
Okay.
That 93% or whatever-
Right.
Is only the EMS side, so it really, it really can't be both, because our fire department isn't covering-
Right. I guess, I guess the, the point is, okay, so in the IGA, is that all, ever, all the communities have fire and EMS?
Yes, correct.
In the IGA?
Correct. And there's, there's seven, seven percent of Lake Mills Township that was originally covered, and that seven percent is covered for both fire and EMS. And there, that seven percent they're paying, they should be getting a bill for equalized value for that, because that's part of the contract.
Correct.
This whole EMS thing is a completely separate contract that-
Right. Which I, I, I do think it still needs to be looked into a little bit-
Absolutely.
A little bit more-
Yeah. Especially if you consider what's on their agenda item for tonight.
And, and we were told that the, the five municipalities did not have to approve that contract, because that contract would fully pay for itself, and that none of our municipality would have to pay for any of that. So I want to know how that accounting is being accounted for separately i- in, in EMS.
Well, and they have it in their budget, contract of Lake Mills.
Yes, but can I ask, can I ask a question?
I don't see how they can be co-mingling those dollars.
Have they, Sheila, have they set up separate, have they set up separate accounting for that? Not yet. But they've been running there since July? There's no, nothing's been done. I'm in the process of working with the interim bookkeeper, and my goal is to definitely set up, you know, separate accounting for it. So we, the labor and revenue, all nine yards. I need cooperation. So it's my understanding that ambulance is the $60 per head?
I, so, I thought that, that the contract wasn't actually signed until September, October, and what they were providing prior to that time was mutual aid.
No, not interesting.
Okay.
All right.
Well, either way, that needs to be clarified, you know, what's going on with that contract.
It does.
But those were, those were my main, my main question is that net income. Because that's the biggest amount that I see.
Well, and I'm, you know, Bill's point-
So then do we do a motion to not approve the-
700,000?
Fire and EMS portion?
I'll make that motion, because we just don't have the information we need.
Okay, what motion are you making? To not approve the fire and EMS portion?
Or should it be part of our budget approval?
Do we wait until next, next meeting when we have? I mean, right now, we know we do not approve, I mean, right now, I don't think anyone on the board is comfortable with approving the amount in our budget for fire and EMS.
So I'll make that motion, that we do not approve the fire commission budget as it stands.
I hear you. Got a motion, a second. But if there's three that do approve it, then we get bought along.
Yep, we know.
Deal with that if it happens.
Yep.
But it still goes down-
You know, I've still got a job to do based on what you, as trustees, want me to do, so I can report back to you that, you know, unfortunately, the three, three municipalities voted for it, but then, you know, I can state how we, as a board, feel about it. We, you know, Sheila and I can keep the press on and trying to get things straightened out.
I have a question for Sheila. You said you do a lump sum payment for that house for residence and stuff of $22,000?
Yes.
That comes out to like $1,830 a month. But you said, Tammy, that it was 850 that they-
Eight fifty fifteen.
For the 2022 budget, and then it, there's a blank there for 2024.
So I'm, there's like a thousand dollars difference.
Right.
That's confusing.
Did somebody borrow more money against the house?
I, well, here, here, here's the question. Jill, I'm not angry at you.
No, that's okay.
I'm just merely saying that the numbers are not adding up.
A lot of numbers aren't-
Well, exactly. You said 850 a month, and she's saying it's a $22,000 lump sum payment.
I think there's two different, there's two different categories, but the one that, where it says rental, has a line through it now.
Because they're no longer rented.
So it's in the 2024 budget.
Oh, that was the house across the street.
Right. That's what I think.
That's because they're no longer rented.
That's exactly, yeah.
Yep.
That's what's happening, Martin.
And then they did, they moved it on the sheet, Tammy, to borrowings.
Okay.
It's under the borrowings now on the budget.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Can you repeat the motion?
Motion to not approve the EMS fire commission portion of the budget as it stands.
Do we want to make this contingent upon getting further information, or are we just saying, no, we're, we're not?
I think, I think we don't, I think, just as it says, as the budget stands today, we don't approve it. We, if they give us a revised budget or give us more information, we can make another motion to say, yeah, now we, now we approve it. So we can change our mind if they give us more information, but I don't think we build a contingency into, into the motion.
Or should we just request them to reduce it by 206,000? I mean, we've already processed the request for arbitration, right, to get the financials?
We have processed-
So that's in works.
Request, it's tricky now that they don't have legal counsel.
We should have, we should have, I'm already getting responses, so we should have legal counsel before the end of the year. Just keeping in mind, though, that the $200,000 on the bottom line is based upon estimates of call volume, okay? It's, those aren't firm numbers. We could easily end up in the red just by having fewer calls than are anticipated. Or if their staffing numbers come out to be anywhere, I mean, you know, they're estimating staffing to be about $176,000, based on a EMT, an advanced EMT, and a basic EMT.
I mean, they, they can come back and ask for a revised budget at that point, if they see the budget's off. Plus, they have a half a million dollars in the bank between them and the fire department.
You have to remember the fire department's a separate entity down the EMS.
But it's all together in a big corporate world, in my mind, yeah. I don't understand that, but we're talking about public-
But when, when I, when I, when I give donation to the fire department, it's to the fire department.
Okay.
It's not the fire department and EMS.
Okay.
So-
We use donation money, we just ended up, I mean, we approved last night a $43,000 we spent on new execution tools to upgrade one of our oldest sets. So the numbers that you were looking at, we wait till the end of the year to make sure we have enough money, and that's when we started upgrading and budgeting money.
But 200,000's been there for years, at least two years.
Okay, all right, so we've got this 248,963 that we have, at this point, we've built into Cambridge's budget, correct?
Yes.
No, I'm, I'm asking.
That's what you're sharing.
Correct?
Correct.
So what we're doing is, we're sending a message back to the commission, saying, we've got to have an explanation, even though we're, we've got this number, and we're just-
I'm, I'm not at this point proposing that we change our budget, because we don't know if three other municipalities will approve, and we'd still be stuck for it. So I wouldn't want to have that liability that we would then need to, because there's no way, I mean, for us to cut 250,000 out of our budget, that, that, that's like reducing three staff. There isn't anything else that the budget of Cambridge can do to get money down that much, and there's no way we can get rid of three staff. So we have to leave that money in the budget, on, on the contingency that three other municipalities approve. So we cannot change the village budget at this point in time, but we can push back on the fire department and say, we're not going to give you our money until-
Yeah, we have some-
We have, we have a better understanding of how you're spending it.
But it's just, it's sensible.
Bill, comments before I-
No, I'm good with it.
Eric? Chris?
No, I just wish I could give you some more detailed information, but there's roadblocks along the way. Those that attended the last fire commission meeting saw the frustrations that Sheila shared, and I don't know if we've, we've made any headway on it.
No.
I believe we have, so.
All right, roll call, please.
Paula?
I.
Bill, Chris?
Can you read the motion again?
Motion to not approve the EMS fire portion of the budget as it stands.
Yes.
Phil, Phil?
Yes.
Mark McValley?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right. Okay, that is, is there anything else on, for you, Chris?
Well, I know that there's audience members that may think that, that maybe Sheila and I are micromanaging a little bit when it comes to this budget, but the fact of the matter is, it hasn't been managed for years. So what we're trying to do through, you know, at your requests, is ask what I look at as somewhat simple questions, and we just keep getting roadblocks. And Paul, you attended that meeting, you saw what, what problems there were, but we'll continue on.
I mean, Chris, I think, I think you have, and Sheila, I'll, I'll include you in this, but Sheila, you, or Chris, you're doing what this board has asked you to do. There's a reason why, why we wanted to change out the fire and EMS commission representative from the village of Cambridge. We gave you very specific, and, and you had said these were the things that you were going to do, which is why then I think you were a good fit. So I, I just want you to know that I'm still 100% in support of what you're doing, because it all comes down to, we are responsible for what happens to our taxpayer dollars.
Right.
And that is a big black hole, that we have no idea where, what's happening there, and we just, we just need to know. And, and per the IGA, we have a right to know. So thank you and Sheila, thank you for what, what you guys are trying to do-
Yes.
-to get us right sized.
Yeah.
And it's not an easy task.
The scary part about it is, you don't want this, this, these issues to roll over into operations.
Correct.
And once it starts stifling operations between EMS and fire, then we have real issues. I mean, and, and so we have a, a large mountain to climb as a fire commission, but, you know, I'm ready for whatever comes our way.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's go on to item two on the fire commission update. Jane?
I can share this one. In a previous meeting, we had discussed the leak that had happened with closed session materials, where there had been a presentation in that closed session of the fire and EMS commission meeting, and those materials were leaked to the press. After that, Steve Zock had called and asked if the village would consider having Computer Magic conduct an email search to figure out if the leak came from Cambridge, because he knew that the, that the email had only been just, been sent to a very, very small number of people. So we did have Computer Magic perform that search, and they found that there were, they found the email and that it had not been forwarded outside of the village of Cambridge, so that was, that was good news.
All right. Questions on that? All righty. Moving on here, correspondence, I don't see that we have any questions, referrals to staff for future agenda items. We're going to be talking about the budget hearing. We've got the comprehensive plan coming up next meeting, the 28th. Water revenue bond, that's December 12th. Are there any other items that you want to have for, well, we only have two more meetings left this year.
Any update on the Melster site?
Well, not at this time. I had talked to the developer, and he wanted to get through some of the other matters that are coming on, so there isn't anything right now. I think he had worked with Lisa on some of the filings. Okay, anything else?
Can I make a statement, one quick statement?
Sure.
So if anybody that sits at that board right now wants to come to the fire station and look at our books and look where our money is and goes, I'd like that to be put on the board that I stated that. You guys are more than welcome at your fire department, as long as it's my fire department, but anybody that lives in our district, that's, we don't have nothing to hide.
All right, we appreciate that.
Okay, thanks, Jill. All right. Nothing else for future agenda items. Upcoming meetings, we've got the 21st Water Sewer, November 28th, the budget, the public hearing, and then the 28th, after Thanksgiving, we'll be meeting back here for the board, board of trustees. Item 13, anybody want to go through this?
I will make a motion-